Thank you all for coming tonight to the business meeting on August 27, 2014. Appreciate you here and again apologize for our lateness, but we are ready to get started. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Mann?
Dr. Martin Field?
Here.
Ms. Dancer?
Here.
Ms. Montero?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Bass?
And Ms. Hyatt?
Present. Looking for an approval of the agenda with any edits that may be suggested? Board members, are there any edits to the agenda? This would be the appropriate time to make it.
I move that we remove, we add the, I'm trying to find it on here. Okay, item 026 to the regular agenda.
All right, that has been moved and seconded. Board members, please note that item 026 has been moved from consent to regular business items in the most irregular but necessary fashion. If there are any comments or questions on the agenda, otherwise we will call the roll. Please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Dr. Martin Field?
Yes.
Ms. Dancer?
Yes.
Ms. Montero?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Bass?
And Ms. Hyatt?
Yes, that brings us to our first item of the evening, which is public comment. First up during our public comment period is Ms. Andrea Flinders. As a reminder to everyone, public comment exists for our stakeholders to provide direct feedback to the board. We ask that you be respectful and limit your comments to three minutes. I will wave at you if you go over that, but that surely will not be a problem for our first speaker, Ms. Flinders. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have a request tonight. This November, Missouri Constitutional Amendment Number Three will be placed on the ballot. The proponents of this amendment will tell you that it's about teacher accountability and making sure that we have high-quality teachers in every classroom. I hate this thing. Excuse me. Not surprisingly, as with many billionaires and so-called school reform people, there's hidden agenda in this language, and I want to make sure that you understand what Amendment Three is about. It's about administration and school boards losing control of their district. It's about excessive testing of our students, every student, every subject, every elective, every year. It's about money, with the cost of state-mandated tests making a huge dent in a district's budget that can only be made up by forcing taxpayers to pay more or by reducing the amount of money and resources that reach the students in our classroom. It's about a one-size-fits-all approach that treats our students like numbers and prevents teachers from treating students like individuals. Missouri's superintendents, school boards, parents, and community members and the organizations they belong to are joining together to fight this attack against our children. The supporters of this amendment have money, and they have lots of it, being funded primarily by a St. Louis billionaire whose name you probably already know. But we have people. We can't outspend them, but we can defeat Amendment Three if we stand together. I have, I'm going to email you a sample template of a resolution that's been approved by the Missouri School Board Association, and I ask that you adopt this resolution, that you send out a press release, and even hold a press conference and join us in this fight against Amendment Three. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Flinders. Our next speaker tonight is Mr. Tom Love. Mr. Love?
I'm here, first of all, I'd like to thank the board members and Dr. Green for the incredible summer school improvements that you're able to get this year. Tonight, I'm speaking concerning a bill that was passed about 12 years ago. It's called Senate Bill 319. It's what I think would, I would refer to as a literacy law. And in that law, the goal is to make sure that all students that are, speak English and that are not special ed students, complete the literacy line. And that line is basically the beginning of 5th grade. Last year, I guess we, I was told we had about 119 students that were in, that met that guideline of not being functionally literate, and that number's been reduced significantly this last year, which I'm really, really thankful for. I'm getting the impression after speaking to Dr. Lewis that there's a good chance we may not have any Senate Bill 319 students in the future because of the help the students are getting now in K through 2nd particularly. And so tonight, I would like to ask Dr. Green and the board members to focus on the older students that didn't receive the help that the students are getting now, that you guys have, have put together. So we have, in that same law, which we're, you know, we're supposed to comply with the state statutes, all local, state, and federal laws, in that same law, the 7th through 12th graders are identified. They're required to be offered summer school, and I would really like to see the 7th through 12th graders who are functionally illiterate, that are perfectly capable of learning to read, to get the help they need. And the law requires that they get summer school or be offered to them. It's mandatory for 4th, 5th, and 6th grade, and it's mandatory to help those students in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. But the law only requires that we offer summer school to them, and I'd like to see those 7th through 12th grade students get the help that they need. And I'd like to share this with you. I attended a meeting where they mentioned that the community colleges are now requiring the students take a reading test before they're allowed to enter the community colleges here in Kansas City. Some of the students are going in and wanting to go to a community college, and they have a 2nd grade reading level, or 3rd or whatever, and they're not functionally literate yet. And so they require them to take that test, and they start helping them to learn to read. It's not that they can't learn, it's that they need the right help. They need a reading specialist, someone who's a certified reading specialist. That's what the school in Atlanta had. The school in Atlanta that came here a couple weeks ago, I went by there last week, stopped in, and the person that's in charge has a reading specialist degree, and just, can I get about 10 more seconds? And they're, they have a, they're dual-certified as a special ed teacher, and they also have two reading paraprofessionals, and that's how you get to 95 percent reading on grade level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Next speaker this evening is Mr. Brian Stadler with an update on Thatcher.
Good evening, guys. Manny here. Manny brought our, what we've been able to put together so far, our efforts to, to find out how much it will cost to rehabilitate Thatcher and maybe save it for the community. On Monday, August 11th, as many KCPS students were getting off the bus at their first day of school, a new charter school was opening the front doors to their new building, a historic building located on Independence Avenue, repurposed to educate students whose parents seek an alternative to the Kansas City Public Schools. A mile and a half east on the very same road, Thatcher, a 115-year-old school building, awaits demolition unless another solution presents itself. When the Thatcher efforts requested reprieve from demolition earlier this year, we were granted six months by a narrow vote of the board. Many members present for that decision have been replaced by new board members, so now we're back again to report our progress and to ask that we are unsuccessful, that if we are unsuccessful in our venture to find a buyer, that the school board might reconsider their desire to replace the iconic building with additional green space and surface parking, and instead find a practical use for the building that would benefit both the district and the surrounding historic northeast neighborhood. Over the past year, a number of engineers have toured the Thatcher site at the request of a grassroots effort surrounding, of the surrounding neighborhood and Thatcher alumni. Prior to these requests from the community, there was no assessed value to the Thatcher school building, and zero interested buyers had set foot inside of the structure. Now we have learned that despite a fire on the upper floor of the annex in 2011, the building is structurally sound, and the estimates to renovate it into a usable space while somewhat high is an entirely reasonable figure for the right investment. And we ask that before the board makes any decision to permanently demolish this 115-year-old building from our community, that they reconsider Thatcher as a valuable asset rather than a liability. Just since we made our last plea, the district has responded by creating a perimeter fence around the building. You have secured the windows on the 2nd floor, you've removed graffiti, you have kept the grass cut, and the neighbors have noticed. We thank you for that, and we ask for your continued support to make Thatcher a permanent valued fixture in our community. Now let me leave you with this. As students in the district are passing notes during a boring lecture in their social studies classes or struggling to remember significant dates that impact the district's AYP rankings, just as much as it affects any student's ability to grasp the historical significance of places or events, the very classrooms that they are learning in are a living part of untold and poorly documented history, where thousands of children have been educated over the past 100 years. The demographics, economics, and geography of Kansas City have changed, but the story of Kansas City Public Schools is still being told, and Thatcher is an important part of that story. Perhaps one history lesson the school district could benefit from would be the importance of collecting, documenting, and preserving stories of their school buildings and the students and faculty who inhabited them. Maybe one day, our children won't have to learn about their history from pictures in a book, but they might actually be blessed enough to continue to experience it in their own neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker this evening is Ms. Mary Hutchison to speak on the proposed partnership between Academy Lafayette and Southwest.
Hi, I'm Mary Hutchison. I live in Armor Hills in Brookside, and I'm a realtor for Better Homes and Gardens Real Estate, Kansas City Homes. The majority of the homes that I sell are in Midtown, Brookside, and Waldo, and the topic of school choice is extremely important to current and potential residents. I'm here to express my support in a personal and professional capacity for the proposed partnership between KCPS and Academy Lafayette to create an IB High School at Southwest. Dr. Green, your team has worked so very hard to gain provisional accreditation for KCPS. Your leadership has inspired everyone to push harder and create significant improvements in the schools. You as the board must be pleased with his results. Therefore, I hope that this board will continue to support Dr. Green by accepting his recommendation for the partnership with Academy Lafayette. We know that Academy Lafayette is one of the state's highest-performing public middle schools per the MAP scores. Even the AL students on the free and reduced lunch programs score very high on these tests. There's a huge demand for the AL program, you're all aware of the waiting lists, and I know people want to move into the city and to stay in the city to have their children enrolled in their program. This reputation and their success must be acknowledged, and now they are offering their services in a partnership with KCPS for the IB High School. This is an incredible opportunity for our community. The community wants it, and it will be a win-win for AL and KCPS, as I understand, an equal number of students will be enrolled from both the charter and the public school. I'm asking the school board to enthusiastically support the merger and the partnership to bring IB to Southwest. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Mr. Edward Pace, also speaking on the proposed partnership between the Kansas City Public Schools and Academy Lafayette. Mr. Pace, are you here with us tonight? All right, our next speaker on the agenda is Samantha McDonald, speaking on the same topic. Ms. McDonald, are you with us this evening? She is not. That brings us to the end of our public comments. And brings us to the second item on our agenda, which is the superintendent's report. So, Dr. Green and your team, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, parents and patrons who are here today. The first item on the agenda is our business report. We always devote time to bring the board up to speed on our revenue and expense status, and then following that, Mr. Tunis will also share where we are with our master plan. Mr. Tunis?
Thank you, Dr. Green, Mr. Howe, members of the board. If you'll notice on the screen in front of you, this is our monthly report. We've modified it a little bit at the start of this year. One of the reasons, we've tried to make, put fewer numbers on it, so it made it a little easier to read. We're also looking at other ways that we can demonstrate the same information so that at a glance, it might be a little bit more effective. If you'll notice, just the area in green, that's a change, that column, we're modifying that a little bit. That shows, that used to show only the month that we were talking about, so this is about July, it would only show July. If we showed November, it would only show the activity in November. What we plan to do here in this column is to show the year-to-date activity, so you'll have the opportunity to see where we are from July 1 through that particular month that we're discussing. And then the orange column will also, is also modified a little bit in that it's making that comparison between what's actual and what's budgeted, and you'll be able to see in that particular area the amount that still remains to either be spent or to receive. The other thing that we did in this particular report is that we merged some multiple state revenue sources into one state line item. And again, the reason for that is it has given us the opportunity to hopefully make it a little bit more readable, but we'll also look at how we can graphically show, as we do, some of our key performance indicators and make comparisons, not just with where we are from where we were a year ago, but where other districts are similar in size and profile to KCPS. Because this is only the first month into the year, and we're still working with our audit report, these numbers change a little bit. Oftentimes, expenses that incur in July and in August need to be charged back to June because they were expenses that were incurred in the previous year, so there's still some reconciliation that will take place in both July and August. But as you can see, there's, there's not a lot of activity in July because many or most of those expenses were charged back to the last fiscal year. With that, I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions regarding the report, and again, we'll have more information as we go through.
Board members, any questions on this report? Seeing none, please continue.
Thank you. I'd like to give the board an update on our master plan efforts. This will be an update that we would like to provide to the board once a month during the business meeting and give progress in terms of where we are and where we have been and where we are going as it relates, relates to the master plan. If you recall, we started activity last fall with our master plan. We had a number of meetings that had taken place, and as we approached January, we, we took a break with the intent to kick it back up again after we went through the, the spring testing. We wanted all hands focused on our efforts to, to reach accreditation, continuing to improve instruction, and so we, we kind of took a break and we're back at it again. There are a couple things that we'd like to do different, and I want to walk you through exactly what that will be. And so, in the past, we talked about it in relationship to being a facilities master plan, and we think that our planning will go much greater than that, and it will be more of a master plan, and there'll be other components in addition to just facilities. Oh, did I do that? What did I do? Bingo. I think I'm ahead a little bit. But before we get into that particular slide, and I hate to try to go back, the, the kinds of things that we're going to talk about, and I made a list of them so I wouldn't forget, we'll talk about our facility needs. So from that perspective, that will get carried over. We'll talk about boundaries, demographics, enrollment, surplus facilities, transportation, capacity, and building utilization, school-size standards, and financing strategies as we look at the needs that our students have in order to continue to improve student achievement as we work toward full accreditation. Our master plan? I got it now. Our master plan, as you can see, is to stay on track for full accreditation, and we want to identify strategies. And those strategies will include what we need to do to ensure that we provide our students and our schools with the resources that they need so that we can continue to increase our student achievement, that we address our lower revenue projections. If you recall, a few months ago, Mr. Evans made a comment when we were looking at our state aid and our enrollment projections, and we showed that there were, that we had a problem coming up in fiscal year 2016, and we showed that there could be potentially a deficit of some $13 million. And his question was, when are we going to start communicating with the community to let them know that we're heading for a potential problem? And the answer to that is right now. We're looking at it, and we're using as part of our master plan, how are we going to address that deficit, and how are we going to continue with that deficit to continue to, to work to improve student achievement? We're also concerned about our enrollment, and we want to continue to monitor. And I'm going to show you a couple of slides regarding our enrollment and how that's going to come into play as we deal with our master plan. But with our declining enrollment, one of the major factors that we have to deal with is the competition that we see from charter schools. We learned on Monday that UMKC will be submitting to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education an application for three additional charter schools to open in the fall of 2015. And that has significant, a significant impact, and again, I'll be able to show that here in just a second. To give you some historic information, charter schools came into play back in 1999, and in the first year, 2000, you can see the enrollment that KCPS had at 36,905 students, and you can see the decline in our enrollment to 2015 where we currently are. You'll see a significant drop from 2008 to 2009 when we had the annexation occur with Independence. If we focus on the, the immediate years, from 2012 to 2016, you can see that from 2013 to currently, our enrollment has decreased by some 1,650 students, and that, and yet we've still increased the number of buildings that we've provided education from 33 to 39. And we did that primarily because strategically, we want to address the needs of our students so that we can continue to improve student achievement to regain full accreditation. The best example of that is our middle schools. We opened two new middle schools because we didn't believe that the manner in which our middle-aged children were being served was adequate for them to provide the kind, for us to provide to them, the kind of educational experience that they deserve, deserved and expected. So if you'll look at this, you'll see also that, you know, our budget decreases during that same period of time, and I use the term, and I have to be careful how I use that, but oftentimes, money follows the student. So if the students are leaving here and going to the charter schools, they're taking with them a significant amount of resources as well. Now if you look at 2015, the number that's listed there, 14,057, the good news is it's greater than what we had projected for the current year. The bad news is it's still not where we need to get it, and there's that gap. And when we talk about that gap, we talk about that gap in, and the other two lines show mathematically, the line that goes down, the red line that goes down is the mathematical equation on using a cohort survival method as to what our enrollment projection would continue to do. The green line going up factors in some, the, the other kinds of initiatives that Dr. Green has implemented that we believe will turn around the decline in, in our enrollment. But how quickly that occurs will really be dependent upon our successes. I think the, the greatest success that we have so far to help turn that around certainly was reaching provisional accreditation, knowing that we're, we're well on our way and very close to, to receiving full accreditation. Now, this particular slide is the one that I was making reference to when Mr. Evans pointed out the potential $13 million deficit a few months ago. And I say this, and I use this slide because it's very, very important for a school district with a declining enrollment. And the way this is written, if you can see FY, the column that shows FY14 budget, this would have been last year's budget. We used in last year's budget FY12's enrollment because the state, again, allows us to use the best of the three-year, continuous three-year enrollment. And so last year, last fiscal year that ended June 30, we were using, and we were paid based on our enrollment from fiscal year 2012. That enrollment was 15,403. The weighted, the weighted average daily attendance that's listed, the 17882 is how we're paid, and what the difference between the two would take into consideration are subgroups, and so it would include free and reduced lunch, special education, ELL, summer school, and then certainly our regular attendance is factored in. So that's why those numbers are a little bit different. If you'll notice in FY14, we used the numbers from FY12 because the weighted average daily attendance was the highest. Now, if you look at the projection in FY16, this isn't the year we're in, this is next year. So even though this year is only two weeks underway, we are well underway in planning for FY16 and being prepared for next year. You'll notice that for FY16, if our enrollment isn't greater than what it was last year, we'll have to use last year's enrollment because that will be our best in a three-year window. And so you'll notice there, right now, we know that last year's enrollment was 14,221. You can see the factor based on our weighted average daily attendance, and again, these are projections, but it would show just from state sources alone, a reduction of some $13 million because the students aren't there. It's imperative that we focus on our enrollment as it relates to addressing our financial needs. And so we're monitoring it, and we're watching that particular component very, very closely as we deal with the, the programs and, and our enrollment, our strategies moving forward. So one of the things that we're going to do a little bit differently than what we did this past fall is to look for a consultant service, a group of people that potentially have done these kinds of things in urban areas in the past. We have asked for and sent out a request for qualifications for firms, and those, those requests for qualifications are due in the middle of September, and that particular group, the scope of, of their services, we want them to talk to us about demographics, capacity and utilization, facility needs, attendance boundaries, transportation analysis, and most importantly, we want to make sure that we find a firm that will work with our community and develop a very strong community engagement plan. Now the deliverables, we're looking for an interim report that will describe each of those four areas listed above. There will be formal presentations and support material, and there will be a final report that will be provided to KCPS as a five-year master plan, and all of that will come due in January of 2015. Now, what this looks like would be that this firm will work with, and will, will work with a firm that we believe will be able to sit down and keep in mind what 4.1.7 is all about. We want to make sure that when we sit down and develop how we work through with our community, that we factor in the various groups. And so we've asked our AFT, we're going to ask DAC if they'll participate in the selection of a consultant, so when we sit down and talk about what we would do here and who we would use, we have our constituents already knowing somewhat about the consultant and engaged in the process. But the actual details of what that community engagement piece really will be built with what they have seen that has been successful, knowing that we have 4.1.7, that we want to make sure that right from the very beginning, we engage our community in to make sure that right from the very beginning, we engage our community in, in everything that, that they do. They will provide their planning approach and project management and they'll also provide sample deliverables. So we'll be able to see what they'll be able to do, how they'll be able to provide service. And then we'll have the ability to sit down and customize what it is that we're looking for from them, that they can work to complement our strengths and we can certainly use theirs as well. And with that, that is our first update on our master plan. But again, we'll be back with more information as we know more.
All right, board members, let's, let's go around the table. Ms. Robinson, can we start with you?
Mr. Tunis, if we're moving in the right direction and I'm on the budget projections for operating budget as it relates to accreditation, why is fiscal year 16 dropped in enrollment so much?
Okay, if you'll look at in FY16, again, we have to use one of three or the best of our three years. If the enrollment that we have, if I go back one slide and, and let's assume for a minute that FY15, that 14,057 sticks, then right now, the two years, the best of those two years would be 14,21. So the third year of the three will be 2016. So we do have an opportunity to have more students next year than we currently have this year and will be paid on next year's students. So if that number were to jump to 15,000 in FY16, then we would use that year. The way the, the formula works, it's to benefit school districts that are declining in enrollment. School districts that are growing in enrollment, they use the, that year that they're in for their reimbursement.
Ms. Montero?
I wanted to ask earlier, when you were talking about UMKC is getting ready to sponsor three charter schools, what is their location and do you know the name of them?
I have their name. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I don't know the location and I don't even know if they know their location yet. They don't have to determine that for acceptance or for approval, excuse me. And I do have their name, I just don't have them with me. I didn't bring them.
Are they elementary or high school?
I think by the name, I would, I would only, I would only draw the conclusion that two were high school and one was elementary, but that may be, I may not be right on that.
Okay, thank you.
But I, we'll have more information. We were just notified of that over the telephone.
Mr. Handy, have questions?
Actually, I just have a comment and then a quick question. Mr. Tunis, Dr. Green, as you know, the, the board has formed a communications and a community engagement committee. And we're working through some issues and trying to get set up and, and get going. And, and I think moving forward, one of the things we identified is ways that we can help support any outreach efforts moving forward. So as we move into this master plan and process, wherever we could plug in and, and be supportive, we very much appreciate that opportunity to work with you. My only question is, I saw an end date. Do you know when you're supposed to pick a consultant and when they're supposed to get started?
The due date is September 15th for proposals. And then I'm sure we'll screen, review, but we are on a fast track. And so I would love to be able to tell you that we'll be able to recommend for, by the end of September.
Mr. West? Mr. Rogers? Ms. Manzer? Dr. Hartsfield?
Also speaking on charter school openings, now is, does this include the two midtown charters that are scheduled to be open? So we're looking then in 2016, already five new charters.
Right. The three that I referenced would be the three that we know of from UMKC. There are three spot, three agencies currently that have been approved in our area for sponsorship. UMKC, University of Missouri, UCM, University of Central Missouri, and MU. Those are the three that are sponsored. We only know from UMKC and, and their three. We don't know of any others. The two that you're referring to would, that we read about, wouldn't occur until the fall of 2016. The three I'm referring would be the fall of 2015.
Right, but I'm just trying to look at the 2016 projection. And so we're talking about those possible two and it says followed by high schools as well. So we're looking at all of those possibly offering options for our numbers.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we seem to be somewhat inundated with charter schools. And with so many numbers coming in, coming on board or potentially coming on board, it makes me a little nervous when it relative to our attendance, I mean, our ability to maintain students. Because if you bring in a high school and a couple of elementary schools in addition to some other charter schools from outside of the state, I'm wondering in five years, what do you think our attendance would look like? And I know that's somewhat of a fair and hypothetical question, but give me, and also, is that something that perhaps we need to start taking a serious look at, at, before its charter schools in order to be competitive with all those outside sources?
Well, let me address that in a couple of ways. Number one, I think we have an exciting opportunity. And I, and I genuinely mean that because I think what we have seen this district do in the last three years has been terrific. And I think we're making strides. And you'll notice on this graph where we've increased the school sizes from 33 to 39 because we're targeting a different population to try to attract students to remain in our school district. One of the things that we have that's different to a lot of different, a lot of other districts that decline, when their enrollment declines is because those families and those children left the area. Our children are still here. We have an opportunity to demonstrate to those children that their best opportunity for education and a quality education is right here at KCPS. Now, that isn't going to happen overnight, but with all the efforts that are being placed in order for us to do that, with the initiatives that are underway, I'm convinced that that number, that what you've asked for, what will that number be in five years? I'm very optimistic that what you see here, or even on this slide that shows 2019 at 14,888, I'm very optimistic that, that number will be even higher. And I believe that because the trend, the declining trend occurred because of the way we were doing business, the way schools were being run. We're doing things differently. We're providing greater opportunities for children. Our high school students are exposed to greater electives and greater opportunities for, for their programs. We're looking very closely at extracurricular activities. We're talking about what, what we need to do to keep kids in school as opposed to go and get them and bringing them back. Let's find out why they left and provide the opportunities that we need to, for those children to keep them in school. Those are the kinds of initiatives, I think, that we're moving forward and that we're, we're identifying. We're, we're setting our schedules in our high schools differently so that we can provide greater opportunities. We're offering dance and chorus and band in, in some of our high schools that we haven't offered before. And I believe we're going to be in a position to hang on to those students so we don't lose them. What's different about ours, we're not looking to have people bring and move their families into, into a household. They're here. They're in the district. And I think we have that opportunity to demonstrate, demonstrate to those families why this is their best alternative. And I think that's what we have to strive to do.
In order to increase that number at 14,888 by 2019 or whatever that is, 2018, are we going to have to be more aggressive as far as charter schools are concerned as a district?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think that, again, those students, I have another graph we didn't include it in the chart and it shows the number of KCPS students in 2013, 14, and the number of charter school students. And we're about, where you see the 14,221 for KCPS, charter schools total a little over 10,000. And so there's a population of students that could be served, in my opinion, more effectively, much more effectively with their enrollment at KCPS.
Let me add to that. And I think what you mean by aggressive, I think we have to not only market ourselves better, but I think we have to be very, very clear about the, the disparity in accountability with regard to charter schools and public, and traditional public schools. They don't have to go through accreditation consideration. They don't, there are other things that are not apples to apples comparison that we need to be very, very explicit about in our marketing that allow for some inconsistencies that charter schools use to market themselves, almost as private, which they're, they're not. And I think we do have to be aggressive in that area and be very, very pronounced about the, some of the advantages that we have. And also, when you do an apples to apples comparison, let's look at where we are in terms of APR and, and other kinds of MPI and other kinds of things that some charter schools escape that scrutiny.
Ms. Manzer?
So I have a couple of questions, but I do have one comment of encouragement. As you become more proactive around communicating and marketing the district, please, please involve parents in your DAC because it's my personal experience that parents are probably some of your very best recruiters for this district because we've made that commitment and you've got some great committed parents in the district. One question is then, these enrollment numbers obviously aren't, aren't including early childhood because the ADA is based on K-12 enrollment, correct?
That's correct. These do not include pre-K.
Okay. So then I, I think the next question I have is, have you done an assessment that identifies if there's any particular points in time at which you lose the highest number of students? Have you identified what those points in time are, those grade levels or, or at what decision points? And, and if you have, I see you nodding your head, so I'll be interested in your response. Have you thought about what kind of effort can be made to reverse that decision at those points in time?
I think that's a great question and I'd like to say, where's Tanya? But, but she's not here right now. That's kind of an inside. I think, yeah, the answer, I think, one of your first questions would be seventh grade and 10th grade. And I would tell you that I think we already did that. I think we've taken the first step with the, with the opening of two middle schools. I think parents, all of us as parents would look at how, their comfort level of bringing and putting their sixth grader into a high school. And we've addressed that issue. I believe that's going to have a significant change in our enrollment for our seventh graders. I think we've provided tremendous opportunity and will continue to provide tremendous opportunities for our middle aged students based on the programs that we're offering there. I also think because of those programs that we're offering there, we're going to push our high schools. We're going to provide opportunities, exploratory experience for our middle school kids that they're going to be looking for when they get to ninth grade and 10th grade. And so those challenges for us to make sure we're challenging our students will be there. And I think those are all the exciting times that we have ahead of us.
Let me add another piece to that. We have a marvelous opportunity with the students who are in our pre-K program. I think about 60, 66% of those students wind up in, and the goal, Mr. Kitzey is nodding back there, is to move that to 80% very soon to get those students to, and they, we have a chance to give them an experience and take advantage of that experience in such a way that they would want to stay with us in that regard. That's another.
Mr. Evans?
I'm always excited to hear you talk about maintaining enrollment. I think along with that, we have, I think we have to take a look at existing structures. And for example, I was out at Pitcher, this is Wednesday. I was at Pitcher yesterday, last night. And the, the parents were talking about, what made me think about that was Ms. Manzer when she mentioned Pearl involvement and informing the community. And I really appreciate that. Any effort that we can do to improve community engagement with parents, I think is necessary. What struck me last night was the playground. One of the parents mentioned that, and the principal mentioned that the playground is just in a deplorable condition. In order for us to maintain our students, I think we have to make sure that we give them what they need in order to make them feel good about wanting to come to our district and maintaining that population. One of the things I would hope that we would do, Darryl, and that is Mr. Tunis, Dr. Green, is at least take a look at Pitcher and find out what they're talking about. Because she said their, their playground is just in desperate need of, of repair. So if somebody could look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Board members, I will just add my two cents. My recycling bin is full every week of brochures and beautiful postcards that I receive from our charter friends. So I certainly would, would second the notion up here that some marketing and some aggressive marketing on our successes would be, would be well received.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next part of our presentation, I as a superintendent will be presenting to the board and the community, what we call the SMART goals. You see them up and around throughout the district, various locations in every school. These are SMART goals, it's an acronym in, in education to say that they are specific, they are measurable, they are attainable, they are relevant, and they are time sensitive. It's the acronym for SMART. You can see on the handout that you have there, I think it's on the screen now, the first couple pages just reiterates our mission and our vision as it relates to the ends that the board sets out for me as the superintendent and the administration and what we will seek to achieve. Board policy, particularly 1.0 and its various subcategories, all the way from addressing the importance of demonstrating literacy, numeracy and critical thinking and moving students in, across grade levels and also across proficiency levels, which is a, a major target. Also, item three being our students being, our scholars being socially, emotionally and academically ready for their experiences. So that just reiterates what's already in the preamble to, in the first stages of our board book. I carry you to the, the third page, which begins focusing on state accreditation and accountability. This, this whole profile of goals is really to look at that and beyond. And so we're looking at what we need to do to maintain our, and go beyond the provisional accredited state and the metrics that will be involved with the, and the strategies that will be involved in taking us to the next level. Later on, I think Friday, the public will have full access. I know the media already has access to where our final APR turned out to be, but we'll hear about that and you will see how close we are to reaching some of these goals, to looking at provision, at full accreditation. That being said, the metrics here by June 2015, we want 100% of our schools to reach their MSET V achievement goals, academic achievement goals. Once the final report is due, every school is going to receive a, an achievement goal. We will be monitoring and measuring their progress toward that goal. It will be by individual school. There will be a metric for each individual school and then there will be a, a very aggressive process of supporting as well as monitoring and measuring students as, and teachers and their work toward, toward that goal and as well as principals. You can see the strategies down the right-hand column. We want to increase the number of students who are proficient or above. That is going to be revealed as our area of need for improvement. While we have shown, and you will see later on when the press conference is held and the final score comes out, students who are with us grow significantly. Even the commissioner said that there's value added in the growth. When we touch them, they grow. The question is, they need to grow across proficiency levels. That's the next level for us. They have grown within their proficiency level from the below, the low part of basic to up to the door of proficiency. We need to cross them, even as the bar gets higher, we need to cross them over the proficiency. We need to cross them, even as the bar gets higher, we need to cross them over the proficiency level, which is what we will be working on. So that increased the number of students who are proficient or above is a critical goal for us this year. And as Dr. Murillo often points out, once we start to do that and status points, in addition to progress points and growth points become available to us, then we'll increase our, our APR. But the main thing is that students will have a better experience and will be doing better with us. You'll notice on the left-hand column also, there will be random checks on any given point in classrooms, who will want to see evidence of them using the Missouri learning standards. That's really the Common Core. As we make that transition to the Common Core, or really the Missouri learning standards fashioned around the Common Core, it's important that we pivot with the, the state as it makes that transition and do not lose a step. We have laid, the foundation has been put in place. We've been splicing in Missouri learning standards-like material throughout the year, knowing that we still had the state standards to deal with, but now we will move to a full-fledged implementation of the Missouri learning standards. So I just share this with you as a part of the metrics. This is still in draft phase, we're still doing some work on it, but you'll see us further refine this and circulate it to you. Beyond the things that we need to do for accreditation, we look at this category here, which I consider to be a critical part of preparing our students for 21st century learning. The five Cs, communication, collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and caring. We will be, we have embedded into our instructional practice the kinds of projects that will cause students to communicate, to collaborate, to, to critically think, to be creative in their critical thinking, and to demonstrate that they can care for one another and care for their community. We will be, you'll see there, the one metric dealing with argumentative literacy. We've had the opportunity to, at the conference that Desi put on, here, Mike Smoker, who's written two books that we're, have read or are going to be reading, one is Results Now and the other is Focus. We've been using his writing as a blueprint for our work in terms of moving students and having them grow with us. This piece of argumentative literacy, and I think you'll appreciate this, Mr. Love, it's more than, it's literacy, but it's also positioning students to be able to advocate for themselves. The kinds of things you have to do to argue your point, whether it's in science, math, social studies, the kinds of positions, the close reading that you need to do in order to argue, to advocate for your position if you disagree with something in the community that you want to change, if you want to advocate for something that you want to institute. We want our scholars to emerge able to argue for themselves across curricular areas and be to not only dig deep into other literature that would support their thinking, but also to argue against literature that would refute their position. That's the kind of deep thinking that we want to have our students do. And the argumentative literacy model that Smoker advocates is something that we are embedding in our curriculum. You will see it fits very well with the mayor's initiative just the other day of the, the read, write, and talk scenario of students being able to be comfortable and literate in advocating and taking on positions and reading closely enough, reading deeply enough any material that's a part of their research. So you can see what the timeline is, by the second quarter of 2015, we will, as we move through the course through a validation, by review of lesson plans and classroom visits, and all classrooms will evidence this use of argumentative literacy, but also using the five Cs, project-based learning, we will embed in our curriculum so those five Cs become evident in what they advocate for. Even as we talk about the, the culminating assessment that students will have, the, the project that they will have, we want to see these five Cs embedded in that and it will be measured by that. I won't spend a whole lot of time going deeply into a lot of these other areas, but you can see the strategies that we will use to measure ourselves and to monitor ourselves as we make this progress. You can see here in the area of MSETV strategy, the item C, we are going to set ourselves on a course to be eligible for full accreditation. That will be done by using the various assessments you see on the right-hand column. You've heard us talk about the switch to using the NWEA assessment in K through eight. Actually, we'll be using it in, earlier than, well, we'll be using it earlier than that, but in K through eight, we'll be, we've used in K two up to this point, and now we'll be using it in K through eight. And as you can see, we will use the annual state assessments, we'll have quarterly reports to look at our college and career readiness, we'll have our monthly attendance reports, we will have our graduation status will be checked regularly. These are the kinds of things that will set us on course to stay in line with the Missouri School Improvement Learning Standards and reach, reach full accreditation. Business and finance and finances, financial solvency, you've already heard Mr. Tunis talk about that. We will continue and enhance our work in this area. You can see the kinds of things we'll be doing, the, in terms of operating and maintaining a balanced budget, in terms of making sure that we keep a fund balance that keeps us solvent and keeps us in a position to address any crises that may occur financially. You can see that we will keep our, we don't have a debt ratio formally, but if we did have a debt ratio, we always presuppose we will make sure that we keep it at the appropriate level so that we are in compliance. You can see that what we will be doing in terms of continuing to have at least a ninety percent fund balance for future employee benefits. Other, tends to indicate that folks pay as they go. We are pleased to be in the position that we are not in that situation. And so you can see the strategies that we will use to monitor, measure, and keep ourselves on track financially. Parent engagement is huge, parent and community engagement is huge. I know this is an area that the board wants to see its superintendent amp up its effort in, in this area, his effort in this area, and we as a administration are prepared to do this, that. You will see that we're going to increase the number of high-performing functional parent groups by ten percent. You'll see the first line in the strategy is establish a baseline, whatever that baseline is, we want to increase that by ten percent. We want to increase the number of volunteers and formal partnerships by ten percent. We will establish a baseline for that and then we'll increase that by ten percent. And we will be reporting to the board what that baseline is and say, from that point on, we will strive to increase that by ten percent. Also, district-wide, you know, sixty-five percent of parents will participate in parent teacher conferences. That's what, that's what our goal is, that's what our metric is, that will be measured by, the kinds of things we will do of that. Ms. Pam Harris is here in the audience, I saw her earlier, who had, will head up our efforts there, we've been working very closely with DAC. I see Ms. Wolfie out there, I don't see Ms. King, but I see Ms. Wolfie out there, we'll be working very closely with DAC to increase this area and improve in this area. And you can see the number of things, home visits, I didn't see the, we, we had the knock and talk, but I think that's in the initiatives, right, later on, right? Let me see, did I miss something here? You can see the other areas that we're going to try to improve in, in making our district the destination of choice. That's a very important, as Mr. Tunis was talking about earlier, we need to do the kinds of things that are going to improve us as an attractive feature among a long, a number of choices, excuse me, a number of choices that folks, families have in the community here. So this specifically addresses what we need to do in working with customer satisfaction and improving our service to our customers, students, and parents. So the number of highly qualified applicants increases by thirty percent, increase the number of employee, number of employees who are satisfied annually, and we'll establish a baseline and move from that. Customer satisfaction, which will improve, will improve twenty percent annually, and also increase on student enrollment by five percent. I think if we achieve these ends, the questions that were raised around financial matters will be, in terms of enrollment, will be answered. The strategies, just go quickly down those, but the baseline for each customer service satisfactory metric, and then improving beyond that, wherever that baseline is, develop a human, a HR recruitment plan. In human capital management, we feel that we have a, a good story to tell and that we have a good means of capturing that story and presenting it in a way that will attract folks to come here. We shared with you last year, we went to Chicago, we went to Atlanta, we saw, we met with a number of candidates, and those, some of those candidates are here because we met with them and brought them here through a recruitment effort. We're going to amp, we're going to amp that up even more so. You can see the developing of an HR survey tool that we will be using to monitor and measure how well we're doing with not only just those that we're trying to attract and recruit, but those, those who are here, some in the audience today. So these are the kinds of things that we're going to be doing to be more aggressive. Mr. Evans, you made reference to this earlier. You can see that the fourth, from the last bullet says aggressively recruit charter school students, KCPS. So we're, we're going to be very, very forthright about that and make every effort to present options to families who are in charter schools now and encourage them to come back to KCPS if they left, or to also encourage them to consider us as an alternative to their current situation, private as well, should have been in that mix. Superintendent priorities, it's, some of these things should look familiar, and here they, they are laid out here in terms of a, a list of things that we are underway with as we speak. The KCPS framework for instruction is, is out now, and that's what Mr. Lewis Gowan uses as a matter of working with our teachers and our students and our administrators. The Missouri learning standards, that's Common Core implementation, we're well underway with that now. Our work in early childhood education, Mr. Kitsey is here, and you, many of you, we will be opening Richardson this, this fall in September, and we're very excited about that. What was the number, Mr. Kitsey? Four hundred and twenty-six, three and four-year-olds will be at Richardson getting ready. Early college will expand this year. So you can see the, the roadmap or the game plan, early childhood, middle school, early college, and everything else in between. But those are pillars to our strategic plan going forward. And so as we look at not only just early childhood, we are going to expand the early college initiative. We have the eighteen students that graduated with both their associate's degree and their high school diploma. That number will be what, Dr. Murillo? Thirty-seven. That will, that will go graduate this coming spring. And then the number will grow from there.
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Thank you. The middle school initiative, we've got ribbon cutting ceremony coming, thirteenth of September, but as you heard Mr. Tunis earlier say, that middle school initiative is a big part of attracting and retaining new families to the Kansas City Public Schools. Our one-to-one initiative, we're in the middle of rollout with that.
I won't go through.
I won't go through all of these, but you can see that these are, are high priority initiatives, and they're in mid-flight as we speak, and some of them well underway. Strategies to increase enrollment involve some of the very same things that I mentioned earlier, the early childhood, early college, middle school, one-to-one. New on this list that may, that's, that's something on the, on our radar screen is our collaboration and communication with UCM and with the Kaufman Foundation and with the Lumina Foundation and others, looking at something like happens with Lee Summit in the Summit Tech Academy, we have a couple of students there, they're having a very good experience, and we would very much like to see a summit, a Summit Tech-like offering for students here in Kansas City, which we would call perhaps the Urban Innovation Tech Experience. That's something that's on the drawing board, something that's being considered. We'll bring you more of an update as it takes on more flesh and has enough substance to share with you. Our master plan will continue to go forward, as you heard from Mr. Tunis. The extended day, extended year, you've seen the outcome of our summer school experience. Please keep in mind that we're going to continue looking at other ways to extend our time with our students. Can't underestimate the importance of that, whether that's right after the new year, whether that's in spring break time, whether that's in the summertime, more times to touch our students gives us more of an opportunity to help them advance or enhance their experience. So these are some of the kinds of things that are underway right now. I mentioned earlier, you can see the second bullet on the right-hand side, we are going to be very aggressive about comparing our APR, our scores with charter schools because I think sometimes that gets lost in that messaging does not come to the forefront when, as the way it should. Financial and economic stability, you can see the kinds of things that we will do to maintain that. Chief on our priority list is, is increasing our MBE, WBE strategies. We're constantly reviewing and working on that, and we will continue to set high goals for ourselves, and we, we will reach those goals. Staffing, I won't go through all this in detail in the interest of time, but maintaining and, and, and supporting staff is a critical part of our effort to address all the things that were talked about earlier with regard to enrollment, with regard to our attractiveness as a school district. These are the kinds of things that we're going to put in place to support staff who are here, to attract new staff, to continue our work with universities, and bolster our, our effort to service our students across the board, and to maintain our diversity at the same time, improve our outcomes. Parent engagement, you can see here, these mention some of the same things that we mentioned earlier. I do call your attention to the welcome centers at each school, that's something new, and we will continue that area where parents and visitors feel welcome in each school and there's a place for them to have a cup of coffee, sit down, and interact with each other. We think that's very important. I also call your attention to the knock and talk. This summer, our parent engagement initiative was, they were out, I would call it taking it to the streets. I'm very proud of what, Ms. Pam Harris, is she here? Where she is, back there, very proud of what she and working with Dr. Cordova and the, the attendance office, they went out door to door, knocking on doors, meeting with parents, sharing with them the good news about Kansas City Public Schools, not only sharing with them good news, but also asking what their thinking was, asking what their, asking them for input about some of the initiatives that we had underway. So I think it was a very, very important time, and I think it had some good, you got some good results, is that right, Ms. Harris? Some good responses?
Yes.
And we're going to expand that initiative. So that pretty much concludes a highlight, not a detailed report, but more of a highlight of the things that we are going to be working on as far as the SMART goals go. We will refine this document and bring it back to the board, but I think you can see we have a lot on the way, we're excited about it, but we're ready to roll up our sleeves and go to work, as we have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Board members, I think there are probably some questions about this, so we could go around once. Ms. Robinson, did you have questions? Ms. Montero?
Dr. Green, when you were talking back at the slide for, about staffing, in regards to seeking more professional development and aggressive recruiting for diversified environment and keeping the staff that we have and helping them move, move forward. and keeping the staff that we have and helping them move forward or upward, or getting additional certification if they so please, my concern would be, how much is this what was coming from our union? If it was, then I'm very supportive of that. If it's not, then I would like to see more communication flow of what the union and teachers are really wanting, as far as what is it that's going to make them stay, other than the love of teaching, because I know that they are all dedicated to doing that, or else they wouldn't have chose that profession. But I'm really wanting to hear more dialogue of what the union is saying, and what are we doing to, once they're at other options, since we can't give bonuses, but what are the, I like seeing the, securing additional certifications like ESL, and those hard-to-fill areas. But I'm also wondering, what else is the union and other teachers wanting? I want to see more dialogue about that, and making them feel, not only because we got the provisional, but secure to keep staying because of the turmoil that we've had about, you know, the contract, new teachers from Teach for America breaking contracts. And I know that you added some news, you know, where they have to pay a fine now, but what other, this is a good start, but I'm really wanting to hear more of what is it the union and teachers are saying that they want?
Yes, and Ms. Flinders and I meet once a month, and as things come up that both she representing the union would like to see, I think she would say that I've been fairly responsive in trying to include those things, and I know that as also, when Mr. Gowan and the committee get together to determine what professional development needs are, it's in collaboration, and we will continue that and work to refine that. So thank you for your point. Well taken.
Mr. Hand?
I think I'd just very quickly like to reiterate a comment I made earlier about the board's Communications and Community Engagement Committee. There's a lot that you went through today, and I think a lot of baseline setting as well. So it looks like you're moving forward with evaluating the processes that you put in place, or the processes that are occurring in place. And that's actually something we talked about quite a bit at our last committee meeting. So as we move forward with sort of getting our heads around what our committee could do, we'd very much like to collaborate in all of these efforts, and we look forward to working with you, and again, complimenting the efforts that you want to move forward with. So, thank you.
Mr. West?
All right. Lots of questions. First, on your state accreditation accountability page, Missouri Teaching and Learning Standards, how substantially different or similar are the standards that we'll be teaching to, you know, the Common Core, which is not what we're teaching. We're teaching Missouri Teaching and Learning Standards. But I'm just curious about how much difference is there between those two?
Radically different, yes. In terms of the standards that were of the past versus what we're headed for in this spring, they're dramatically different. The Missouri earlier standards, they had strands, and you could teach to a particular standard. Now, there are broad levels of demonstration that students must exhibit. I'll give you an example. A student may be asked to read a passage very closely, and to present a solution to a problem that's presented in that passage, and/or may be presented with solution A, B, and C, and if you don't think A, B, and C are sufficient, come up with your own solution to that problem. The level of, the switch to informational text, the percentage of that dramatically increases to, what is it, sixty percent, seventy percent informational text? So the traditional text that I would normally teach in 12th grade English, Hamlet, and reading Nathaniel Hawthorne's Scarlet Letter, those are fictional texts. Those are not informational texts. So I might have to not teach that as much, and also, I can teach the close reading, but it's not reading for information to, that's the switch. Add more to that, Mr. Gowan?
I was just standing here amazed at what a good job you're doing. You're amazed? You really know what you're talking about.
So given, you know, that we're talking about some fairly significant changes from the curriculum that's been used, from the standards that have been used, the standards we're using, you mentioned in your strategy that you're going to increase the number of students who are proficient or above, and I'm just wondering, do you have an idea of by how much?
Well, we're going to go from the baseline that we are. We know that right now, seventy percent of our students are in that below basic to basic category. It used to be eighty percent. We are going to be reasonable about that, but we're going to set ourselves, I mean, ten, I mean, increase by five to 10 percent. We need to move students across. We can't do it overnight, but we need to see students crossing, and that's the charge to the academic team that we're taking on, crossing thresholds. Even if they're below basic, they need to move to basic, and even if they're basic, they need to move to proficient. They're not going to jump two at a time, but we need to see, we need to see that below basic, basic bar go down, and the proficient and advanced go up, and that is our charge. The actual metric, we will be bringing back to you later. We need to see what the data shows us what we are like this year, and then we'll go from there.
And even though the board has expressed this in the past, this is the first time I've seen the administration really swing at this in a meaningful way. You know, on, you know, item 1B, the five Cs of 21st Century Learning Standards, you, you know, actually, I really love the thoughtfulness going into this. What I'm less clear about from reading your strategies is how will you measure communication, collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, caring? Is there an instrument that's going to be used? You know, if, I just want to know, how are you going to come back to us and demonstrate that the achievement of our scholars in these areas measurably move from point A to point B?
And we're still working on that, on some of them, but some of them, we're going to be able to, you know, Grant Wiggins always starts with, you know, begin with the end in mind. So the project that we will call upon students to do, you can't do the project unless you collaborate. We're going to set it up that way. You cannot do the project unless you communicate. So the kinds of the end that we will put before students, and some of the projects that we will measure that, will call upon them to do the kinds of things that we're expecting, and then we will observe that, and then we'll have an instrument that will give us the degree to which caring, collaboration were used, and we'll set that up in a rubric. That's the plan.
One more, before I move on. You mentioned on 1C, talking about the IMSIP 5, that all staff and students will be able to analyze appropriate data and create and execute an action plan. If I'm understanding the context of this, this means that relative to their current performance academically, that they will have that information, they'll be able to develop a plan, says here's where my level of achievement is now, here's where I'm trying to get it. Is that what you're saying? And if so, by when are you expecting all staff and students? When you say all, do you mean all, because we also have three- and four-year-olds? I mean, what does this mean, and what's the intention here?
The intent was basically, and primarily off of what we will receive back from the state tomorrow or Friday, and then we will, we talk about students becoming the CEOs of their own learning. Dr. Sanders is famous for saying that, the student will know how they performed, and will be able to set an action plan for him or herself, and model that, and follow that, and report out on that, as wherever their math score was, wherever their ELA score was, relative to the map or the EOC, and be able then to say, this is where I am, this is my improvement plan, my own IMSIP 5 improvement plan.
Just as a follow-up to that, I understand, it sounds like a, I love the idea. What evidence are you all relying upon that, given that that's probably going to be a fairly time-intensive, you know, process? Again, it sounds like a great idea. What evidence are you all relying on, that that, that our scholars going through that process will be a strategy that actually is likely to result in an increase in their own achievement?
Dr. Sanders, on implementation, you want to comment on that? While you're coming up, I'll talk about it a little bit. The goal is to, students will have, and she's put together the action plan for that, but students will be able to track and measure themselves. There will be, with the NWEA, there'll be a RIT score that students will get, and they will actually see immediately, and since it's online, it'll come back to them right away, and they'll be able to see exactly what their performance was. Dr. Sanders, you want to elaborate further?
Yes, I think the board has already seen in the past, tracking forms that are used at the high school, and then you've seen data notebooks, examples of those. And in those, it asks the student, what is your current performance? What is a goal that you've set for yourself? What is it that you need to do? What is it that your teacher needs to do? What is it that your parent needs to do in order to support you to reach that goal? What many parents, I mean, what many teachers do is that they have what they call student conferences, and they have things where the other students are engaged in other activities, and they call the students up one-on-one, and ask them to present information, and then talk to the student about those goals, as realistic, what else can I do to support, and to do those intermittent kind of progress checks. Also, you may see on there that we have said that student-led conferences, we started those last year. That's once again for a student being a CEO of his or her own learning, being able to tell their parent. It'll probably also, as we've seen in other places, increase our attendance at parent-teacher conferences, because their student will be the one, of course, the teacher is sitting there to, you know, help inform that.
I actually had an opportunity to observe some of this, and I loved it. The scholars I talked to loved the process, the parents, everybody loved the process. What I'm asking, though, one of the things I heard, you know, from the teachers involved is, it's just time-consuming. And I think if it's time-consuming, as long as we have some evidence that going through that process actually sets us up to grow achievement for our scholars, then, you know, it's warranted. And so what I'm, just what I'm wondering is, what evidence do we have, you know, that that particular investment of time, you know, has been a really viable strategy for improving scholar achievement?
I think that you'll see that when we can release the information of the schools that are the green schools. They have processes like that. And if you've ever been in picture, you can walk around, and you can see the notebooks in every classroom. You can do the same thing at Hartman. You can see, it's various schools, and even at the high schools, I think that we brought East High School forth, and they had their tracking forms that they shared. So the time and the investment is definitely worth the effort.
Mr. Rogers?
Dr. Green, you have a vicious agenda. Mr. Evans, I think you and I kind of remember when we used to have these school improvement plans, and at the end of the year, we had to kind of justify where we were on that plan. So, Dr. Green, I look forward to June the 30th and see where we are.
Ms. Manzer?
Dr. Green, I'm impressed too, though I'm a little worried about argumentative literacy, because having a 16-year-old boy, he excels in argumentative, so I'm a little nervous about that. But I think the only comment I make, and you don't have to respond to it right now, is thinking about, I think this work probably feeds in, definitely, if done very well, will feed into increased ACT scores, and I think ACT scores are something that the community looks to. So that's, you know, they have a hard time looking at progress points and EOCs and all these other things, but they definitely hone in on that. So just kind of keep that in your thinking as you develop your plan.
Dr. Hartsfield? Mr. Evans?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Montero, I really appreciate you bringing the attention to teachers, focusing attention on teachers, because sometimes we get bogged down in other things, and we basically and literally forget about how important they are to this entire process. So I want to compliment you on bringing that subject up. And this is not something that I necessarily need right now, Dr. Green, but I would like to know, since it was brought to my attention last night, on our one-to-one initiative, and you can certainly send this out some other way than tonight, I'd kind of like to know where we are, and how are we doing? Are we okay with our one-to-one initiative? And is it functional, or is it working as well as we would like for it to? If not, what do we need to do to make sure that our one-to-one initiative is doing what it was expected to?
I just do want to make a little comment to that. I think we are still learning along the way, and you've seen we've, in fact, Ms. Flinders and I met about that yesterday. We staggered the start of that. I mean, while we still know that we have online assessments coming in the spring, even in the face of that, we have made some modifications to slow down the rollout and do some more communication on orientation to parents, as well as to the training for teachers. So we're modulating and dialing as we need to give, and other things have arisen even today that we're learning. So we're monitoring that very closely and adjusting as we go. But I'll give you, we'll get a full report in the Friday packet.
Ms. Robinson?
Also on the Friday packet, can we take a look at school year 2014, the past school year, and the goals, the SMART goals that we had, and just the progress? I know that we get those intermittently through the board workshops, but it would be great to look and compare side-by-side what you presented tonight in relationship to last year, and how we met those.
I also had one comment real quickly. I think this is great, two things that I would like to see. If there's a way to disseminate this information to board members in a set of talking points, so that as we meet with the community, as we share this information with stakeholders, that would be very effective, and it would help us tell the story of this. And then I'll just piggyback on what Ms. Robinson said there. I hope there is a plan to put all of this into an evaluative form, and report back to the board periodically on progress and then success toward these goals, because they certainly are, I think, a set of transformative goals and objectives. And if we can come close to meeting these, I think it will be a good year indeed. Board members, any further questions? All right. Dr. Green, Mr. Tunis, thank you very much for two very good presentations. All right, board members, it is our turn to get to work. We have an item on our policy governance.
Move approval of item 001.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion around 001, which pertains to adoption of policy relative to conflict of interest?
Can we just have a brief overview for the public to let them know what that is?
Absolutely. Mr. Sazli?
That is a board member conflict of interest in financial disclosure policy. It primarily mirrors what we've had before with just a little bit of change through the legislative process. It will still require that we, that the board members file with the Missouri Ethics Commission every year, and it, the law has changed a little bit to allow board members to actually deal with the district in which they serve, but as long as it's disclosed. So it's a little bit of an expansion in what you can do, but, and it's a formality, and it's a requirement that we approve it every other year.
Other questions? Mr. West?
I would just point out that even though this administrative policy, we're required by law to pass, has the force of state law, that our board policies are still, in a few areas, stricter than what state law allows. And it just demonstrates this board's commitment to transparency and going above and beyond the call of duty as it relates to conflict of interest disclosure.
So noted. Any other questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Ms. Montero?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes. Takes us-
Takes us to item four on our agenda, regular business items.
Move approval of item 032, Catalyst Fund for KCPS Students MOU.
It's been moved and seconded. We did receive a presentation on this last week, but if there are any further questions, I believe that Dr. Fields is here tonight.
And Coaches, Pacina, and Fields.
Ah, hello, I didn't see you. All right. Any questions, board members? Yes, ma'am.
I was looking under A, number five and number six. Number five states the community's legitimate expectation is that the board supports the foundation through the foundation's limited use of facilities, equipment, and personnel. I needed some clarification of what that meant.
Dr. Green, will there be a question for you or will there be a question for Dr. Fields and Ms. Pacina?
Thanks, Dr. Hartsfield, for your question. Basically, the, in the MOU, we did mention that there might be opportunities for the board, the board to support the Catalyst Fund for KCPS students via certain usage of facilities. So what we have come up with is a, a number of small items. For example, the use of an office, the use of a computer, the use of a file cabinet so that we could, and the use of an address as well, so that we can utilize the, the school board building as, you know, and house the Catalyst Fund in, in the same space. People need to understand that there is a partnership there, that we are very closely, jointly, you know, moving forward. And so that is something that Dr. Green and some of his staff members have offered us as, as, as a kind of a supportive, in a supportive role, basically. So those are things, nothing, I don't, I mean, and, and, oh yeah, I'm sorry, and, and Mrs. Pacina had mentioned, those are not necessarily permanent donations, those are just for our, our temporary use so that we can utilize those things in, in kind of the startup phase.
Okay, well, I guess I had just some concerns because when I looked at the fiscal part, it said there was no fiscal kind of piece. It did also say personnel, and it just seems to me these needed to be spelled out a little bit more because I think it might have some other implications, but I did not understand as an independent 501(c)(3). It's basically saying that we're housing and providing something, so I just felt a little more information was needed.
Yeah, I think we would consider this kind of an in-kind support for a foundation that's going to support our kids and, and our mission. And so the office space and the access to phone, et cetera, we were, as they started up in their initial phases, I think the initial plan is for them to transition out at some point, but entering their early phases, they made a request, and we were offered to give them some space here for that purpose. But we will spell that out more clearly.
Other questions around the MOU? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans? Yes. Mr. Pacina?
Absolutely.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Ms. Montero?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Gratefully and proudly, yes.
Yes. Next item in the agenda is consideration of the minutes for the April 9th, 2014 open board meeting. Madam Secretary, please remind me, this was pre-swearing in of our new board members, correct? All right, so Ms. Robinson, Dr. Hartsfield, Ms. Manzer, please enjoy your brief respite here. Board members who are on the board on April 9th, please make a motion and second it, and let's get to the vote. Is there a second? Moved, seconded, any conversation around this? Seeing none, please call it.
Mr. Evans? Yes. Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfield? Yes. Ms. Manzer?
Abstain.
Ms. Montero?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Abstain.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yes, that brings us to the last item on our regular business agenda, which was the amendment. Looking for a motion on item 026.
Move to the, we approve item 026, a minute to the Mark budget.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Montero?
Yes, I do have a discussion question on that. Is this pretty similar to what we've seen the last two years where Mark provides 80% of the funding and the district has to come up with the other 20%?
I believe the answers to your question are coming down the aisle right now.
Thank you. The, this is the sequestration money that was reinstated by the federal government. This amount of money is actually being dated back to November 1st. So it's the 5.27% cut that we realized, and a little extra money that Mark decided was necessary to raise our per-child allocation up by $622 per child. So they're able to use the money they got back from the federal government any way they wanted to. They decided to up our reimbursement to six, by $622. The great news about it is this will now be our set amount going forward, so we're going to increase our family advocates and some other things that are needed, starting now going forward. But we also have the money from November 1st till June 30th that was unspent, that we get to use for the renovation of Richardson and more security measures at Richardson, Woodland Playground at Richardson. So we get to use that as we see fit, which was reinstatement, but it's not related to the match at all. It's a reinstatement of sequestration.
Okay, and I just, I needed clarification because in, in the contract itself, I see where the, some of the funding is coming from, but it also had that language pertaining to 80% and 20% in there, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, that's still standard. We still have to have a 20% match, which we, we do through in-kind mostly.
And where is that 20% in-kind match coming from? What budget account?
What budget account? The 20% match that we calculate in our reporting back to Markers, all the office space and all the things that we use as an administrative number, and then all the volunteer hours, anything where people are contributing into the program, staff time-wise or volunteer community-wise, or partners coming in, medical community volunteering, do screening, that's all part of that 20% as well.
So like if we had a family that was on Medicaid and we had some kind of counseling that they needed, then we get reimbursed or medical for that? Is that what you're saying?
No, not.
Okay, can I break, then, you've lost me then. So break it down to me like I'm a third grader, because I'm lost.
So we, we have to do health screenings for all the children. They have to have height, weight, vision, hearing, dental. Well, we don't have dentists in the district, but we have Happy Smiles or a group like that that comes in and does that.
Right, so we're, we're getting reimbursed for that through Medicaid?
We, no, we don't get reimbursed. We count that visit, that they're volunteering that time with that child.
Okay.
As long as they're on our space and they're volunteering, we count that cost as a match.
Okay, so.
But we don't get any money for that.
So are we needing any additional funds from that 20%?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, for the questions? Very excited to hear the news that we're getting more money per student.
Yeah, it's great.
It's not a small increase, so, good news. All right, let's call the roll.
Mr. Evans? Yes. Mr. Hand? Yes. Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Ms. Montero?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yes, that takes us to the consent, the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Question?
Yes.
There are questions?
Not on the consent agenda. The consent agenda is just a vote. If things need to be moved to the regular business agenda to, to be questioned.
Mr. Evans? Yes. Mr. Manz?
Yes.
Ms. Montero?
Abstain.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Abstain.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yes, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Board members, thank you very much for your service tonight. Thank you for attending. We adjourn.